Call the November 2021 U S D three fifty Board of Education meeting in order. Welcome visitors. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Mr. President, I move that the board approved the agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carried. Consent agenda.
I have nothing unusual to report on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that the board approved the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carried. Patron comments? Professional. Sorry, professional development plan.
Every five years we need to update our professional development plan. We get state funding, a little bit of funding for professional development for teachers. It's not much, but it's part of the accountability process. To submit that to the Kansas State Department of Education. You have that plan on page twenty six. It really just lays out our professional development committee. We assign a board member to that. The only time, I mean, board member is always willing, or is always welcome to come, but there's really not a need for you all to be there because it's a pretty simple process. So whoever would have an appeal or something of points. So teachers get points that then go toward their license renewal. We have a procedure in place for teachers to apply for those points. And they go to an in-service all day, they get awarded so many points for being there. In a committee that meets monthly, we approve those points. So this spells out the membership of the professional development committee. How you go about applying for points, what if I disagree with the committee's decision? So we have a, Joanne McAllister is our points keeper. So she keeps all the points and transcripts for everybody. And then in our meetings, we have the chairperson, the secretary and all that. The one edit we had, I think, was this member served no less than one year, not more than three years. We're just, we have a rotation of when somebody should, when their term is up, but we're just going to strike that because sometimes it's hard to get people. If somebody's willing to serve, we'll just let them serve. So that's the only edit there.
Do we have much conflict in the setup of our, there are no complaints?
No, no, not at all. Nope. It's a, it's a non-issue. Really, the only edits from our last plan was just getting more specific about if I was a new teacher in the district and I wanted to know how I go about getting my points. It spelled out a little more clearly than it has been in the past. I'd recommend that professional development plan be approved.
Mr. President, I move that the board approved the professional development plan as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the professional development plan as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carried. Superintendent contract.
This is just, so we have a chance to review the contract for my employment. It's a two-year contract, so it runs this year and next year. So this will be for the board to consider rolling that two-year contract over for the next two years. We would discuss salary information after we get done with negotiations like we do every year. Wait on that to determine that. This doesn't have anything to do with the principal part of the job. This is just for the superintendent part. No changes to the contract. Anybody had any questions about that? We can address that here in executive session. We'll review my evaluation, so you all should consider that before you consider rolling over my contract.
All right. Thank you.
So I'll ask for approval on that next. Thanks, Mo.
Premium pay.
This is our plan with our ESER funds, the donor virus relief funds. We've had a, we've had a lot of people not want to work in schools across the state messing with this COVID stuff. It's been difficult. We've asked people to do a lot more and take on a lot more. So in recognition of that, we have it on our plan to provide all staff members a $500 stipend for staff retention. We'll pay that out this week. And we'll talk a little bit more about that specifics in executive session. But I'd recommend the board approve that.
Mr. President, I move that the board approved paying staff members a one-time payment of $500 from the ESER funds.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approved paying staff members a one-time payment of $500 from ESER funds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carried. Nurse substitute pay.
What we've been doing is, you know, the nurse is on a teacher contract. So when we have somebody come in and sub for her, we just pay the normal sub rate of $110 a day. That's far less than probably what a qualified nurse could make in hourly rates somewhere else. We've made more of an effort to make sure we have a certified nurse or nurse with some sort of license, especially with this COVID stuff. And we've got some ongoing health issues with our student body that really need attention. So it's important to have that. Across the state, it varies. There's a lot of districts that do what we do, just pay it on the teacher's salary schedule. There's some in here that are $35,000 a year, $43,000 a year, $19 an hour, $26 an hour, $30 an hour. And that's for their, their actual nurse, not some. So I think it's appropriate to look at upping that pay just for that position if we have a certified person coming in there to pay that at $25 an hour.
Do you have any problem with people subbing for this?
Yeah, I mean, we've been able to get people, but we've had some that have said, if it's just the regular sub teacher pay, I'm not interested in doing that.
Would this only apply if it's actual nurse student, not if you have to have other students?
Yeah, yeah. If we get a regular teacher sub in, we would just pay the regular sub rate.
Okay.
Because we really can't ask them to do all of the nurse stuff. Just under the direction of the nurse, this kid needs to have this medicine. And if there's a Band-Aid, some of those things. But when we have a nurse in, we have a seizure in the room, we expect that nurse to be right there dealing with that. And it's not, it's not a legit expense for us, but help us make sure we can get qualified people.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move that the board approved setting the nurse substitute pay at $25 per hour for certified nurses.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the nurse substitute pay at $25 an hour for certified nurses. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carried. Financial software.
Just checking to make sure Debbie wouldn't wait there for us. Our financial software is through a company called Harris. Nine years ago, we went through a process to convert our data. We housed all our data here on our servers, moved to this cloud-based system where they house our data. It was quite a process to move all that data and get trained on the new system. This current version 3.0 is becoming obsolete. There's not a lot of districts left using this. At some point, it's going to be completely obsolete and they'll stop supporting it. But so at some point, we need to look at moving. Now might be the time to do that. It's not cheap. So you're looking at about $11,000 for implementation, setup and training to convert to the new system. So I say the new system, there's several systems here. We have our main system, the Aptifund three, and we'd be converting that to an Aptifund four. We have our activities accounting in the high school office that we run all of our tickets through and the lunch money and all of that stuff. The clubs, Scholars Bowl, those things run through that office. That software has been obsolete since Susan Lewis was here, but we've limped it along. It's been okay, but, so that would be upgrading that, which really needs to be. Employee self-service is our, that's where our employees log on and get their pay stubs and their W2s.
Time card system.
And, oh, that one's this one, the attendance, attendance on demand. And then, so there's lots of different systems that work together for one system. And the timekeeping and attendance, that all talks to that Aptifund. So we don't need a separate system and input data. It all, it all works together. So you can see not much difference in annual cost, but it's that sticker shock of that, that one-time fee. And there, I don't think so, but we can try. There may be some wiggle room there with that, the startup costs.
Are you happy with that company now they've supported you?
I am. The initial implementation years ago was not good, but again, that was a data conversion. Some of the, we gave them our data and the communication wasn't clear on what data goes where. And this, the training was not very good at that time. So I would expect this, you know, would be another 10-year deal that, you know, we're looking at $11,000 instead of cost, a little more than a thousand bucks a year. We stick that, stick with that for another 10 years if you spread that cost over that time. There are other options available. Skyward is probably the most, most popular. It's a lot more cumbersome and more expensive.
Then why is it more popular?
What's that?
Then why is it more popular?
I don't know that it's more popular. It's more, it's, it's, it's got a lot more features. I couldn't tell you as far as how many districts use it compared to Harris, but I would not recommend going away from this. We know the system. It's not going to change, it's not changing a lot. It's more of a, just an upgrade from the current system. So there won't be, we won't be sending them data. They've already got our data. They'll be converting it from that old system to the new system. So I just want to keep this in front of you. They're obviously pushing us to get it done as quick as we can. There was some talk that maybe we could start in it on the accounting side in January and then the employee side of things, the timekeeping, the things that they have to access, build that out next year. But I don't know that that makes sense. Probably be best just to do that here when we roll over to the new fiscal year in July. So something to be thinking about.
All right. Thank you. Board member activities and reports.
Don't have anything.
There.
No.
Okay. Administrative. Mr. White.
Just a quick review on the parent-teacher conferences. We had about 87% of our families that attended. Some of them were attending through phone calls. You know, we did alternate, alternate ways, but 87% at the secondary levels, pretty high percentage. And one of the things we've done to kind of improve that is every teacher's, there's a letter that they fill out. It's a kind of a form letter that gives the time and date, and we mail that to families. And I've had several say that if we hadn't mailed it, they wouldn't have known what time they were supposed to come in. So instead of letting people just come in whenever we schedule appointments, it seems to have helped quite a bit. So there's that percentage of families. I don't know that we'll ever get to come in, but pretty happy with anything above 80% to be honest with you. Because first, my first year here, we were down around 60, 80%, something like that.
Before you leave that, some of, I think, it's more focused on what the interest of the kids.
Right.
Rather than, here's your grade card, this is how your kid's doing. Well, I don't need to come into school to see how my kid's doing. I got it on my phone. Hey, look at my, how my kid's doing every minute of the day. So I think that's why we've seen an increase where it's focused.
That's been part of it. And, you know, they're setting goals with the kids and the parents there. Some of it's an academic goal, some of it's behavioral, some of it's career goal. So it's focused not on, you know, each individual class necessarily.
And they can still go visit with the math teacher if they need to.
Yep. But hopefully, we've gotten away from the idea that we'll wait till parent-teacher conferences to talk about issues that we need to talk about in the classroom. We have a lot of ways to communicate, so working past that. Natalie's in at the business teacher. That's like a celebration for me because it takes a lot off my plate. But so far, you know, she stepped right in and she's, it's like she was there from day one almost. She's got activities going, so it's really exciting to see that happening there after we didn't know what was going to happen. The assessments and progress monitoring part that I sent out to you, we're just changing some things. That's why I included that we started our aims web. We used to not do aims web, but now we're doing it up through eighth grade. And all of our testing for the high school has started. It's an ongoing thing, so it goes through the year. Changing some things there, which has helped with our MTSS, which is Kim Helfrich, that position. She's been, her and Julie Fox have been working with kids in junior high and high school level, which we have not had that. MTSS is multi-tier system of support, if you don't know. But we have not had that at all at the junior high and senior high level to speak of. We've had what we call LS, and we pretended a little bit that that was MTSS, but it wasn't. So I think having Ms. Helfrich in there to kind of guide that has helped a lot. We'll grow. You know, there's some hiccups we're having to figure out, but we'll grow with that. Pretty excited about the greenhouse. I don't know if you guys have seen any of that yet, but.
There's pictures.
There's pictures of the greenhouse there. Lot of people involved in putting that together, but we'll have that up and running with, with things growing before too long. So Mr. Delp's excited to get in there, and Mrs. Michael's going to do some stuff with her class, and I'm not sure elementary will have some things going on in there. So hopefully that's full before long.
Thermostat for the heat and thermostat for the exhaust, so very low regular temperatures, circulating fans. And there's a tower garden. We got that kind of state with our food service.
Good learning opportunity for all levels, and so really appreciate having that. It really adds a lot of footprint to what we had before, a lot bigger growing areas. Thursday, we'll have a short Veterans Day program. Invite all you guys to come in. We'll start it at nine. Mrs. Patterson's class is cooking some coffee cake and making coffee for veterans to come in at 8:30, so they can come in before and have a little, little treat before they go into the Veterans, Veterans Day program. But it's not going to be a tremendously long program, but it's, you know, I want to honor, honor those people that have served. So if you guys feel inclined, please come in. The math relays is something we didn't get to do, and Mrs. Farrell had really pushed for this. We have eight kids that want to go compete in a math contest, so they're going. Just something that's kind of neat that you don't hear about a lot of, but they'll go on the 11th. They missed the program, but it's always interesting to hear their stories when they come back. School musical this weekend. Love to see you guys there one of those three nights. Friday, Saturday, Friday and Saturday at seven, Sunday at two. Kids have been working hard. I think it's going to be a pretty good musical. Mamma Mia is what it is. Fall sports have all wrapped up. Biggest success there is our cross-country team qualified for state for the seventh year in a row as a team. And every, I believe that every kid that ran had their best, their personal best time at that meet, so that's exactly what you want. They really represented us well. All of our athletes represented us well through the year as far as sportsmanship and everything. And this week is buffer week, so we shouldn't have any activities in the gym. That doesn't mean if somebody can't be shooting around or whatever, can't have anything organized. Junior high basketball numbers, you've seen that. We have a lot of boys out, and part of that is the product of having a sixth-grade class that has 24 boys or whatever it is, and three girls. That's kind of an anomaly. Next year, the sixth-grade class will have mostly girls and less boys. So for a one, one-year cycle here, I think we're going to have a huge number. We are working on some C-team events. Anybody who we play that has enough for C-team will try and play them. If it's here, we'll play that, those C-games after the varsity, play them at the end with those boys. So we're going to do our best, but it also means not everybody's going to play as much as, as they want to. It may mean that we alternate some kids on road trips as far as traveling. We haven't worked all that out yet, but we definitely fill up a bus. Fourteen girls, two managers. By the way, since they have so many numbers on the boys, we did not allow managers there. They have enough people on the team to, to work as managers. So we're starting our wrestling. We have that cooperative agreement with Stafford again. I think we're going to have four students that are traveling over there to wrestle with them. They, you remember, it's a quasi-team sport, so they wrestle with the Stafford club, but at postseason, they'll wrestle for St. John. Because if, if we combined completely, or we can't, we can't combine completely in that postseason, they have to wrestle for us. So if we have anybody who makes it, they represent our school and that's the name that is on their bracket.
All boys or any girls there?
Yeah, we have two girls and two boys.
Okay.
Right now, yeah. Scholars Bowl, last I looked, we had seven participating in that, so that's a good deal. We haven't had that participation for a while, so we've got a full team and have started, started on that. Couple of things I'd like to share. I mean, I'm going to the principal, Kansas Principal Association Conference next week on the 16th and 17th. Just a good opportunity for me to kind of network and learn some things that are going on. I appreciate Mr. Meyer allowing that, you guys allowing that. It really is an opportunity. And I've been in a elevate, I'm in an elevate leadership is the program that KSE is doing this year. And I've been to three meetings so far, and it's been, it's going to be a tremendous help to me to grow professionally. But the big thing is it's helping me get past how we dealt with things and to get back into a principal role instead of just management and trying to figure out how to take the flying monkeys as they come at me. But anyway, I appreciate the board's support, Mr. Meyer's support, allowing me to go do those things so that, so that I can have that professional growth. Any questions? Took enough time, there were no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Meyer.
Elementary-wise, we had 89% turn out. 89% of students were represented. We also do the goal-setting with, with those, those students. I don't have anything else to add on the greenhouse. KISA is Kansas Education Systems Accreditation, so we need to be an accredited school district, and this is the process to go through that. I just wanted to keep this, get this back in our minds about what we're talking about here. So the process is a five-year rotation. So we went through years, our first year, just collecting data, trying to identify some areas of improvement. Went through year two, developing goals, establishing goals. Year three was a 1920 school year. We began to implement those goals, and then COVID got in the way. Last year was a pause year. We didn't do anything. We weren't required to do any meetings or, we still had those goals in place, we just weren't focused on them, weren't required to do anything with the state. And then, so now we're in year four, continuing our implementation of those goals. Next year will be year five, where we have our accreditation visit. That team, an outside team comes in. We actually visit with that outside team each year, but in the fifth year, it will be a process where they look at all of our data, achievement data, any data we have to offer, explain what we're doing, and then that goes to the state board for, there's an accreditation board and then it goes to the state board for final approval. So that's where we are with the process. Next year will be our accreditation year. Our goals are pretty limited, so don't think of this, this is everything we need to do. But a couple of our goals, we were focused on relationships, connections with families. So that's where we're at with the, we implemented a new student information system. That old system was difficult for parents to navigate. It wasn't a good tool. So connecting with families in that way, just having better, better tools. And our automated messaging system was not very good. That's a better system now. We added that goal-setting component to our conferences. The idea there was that it's more of a two-way street, not just, hey, here's the information on how your kid's doing, we'll see you later. It's what do you want for your kid? What is your kid struggling with? What do you want to see them improve? Anything from, we need to get our kid to job shadow. I want to, I want my kid to have six college credits by the end of this year, things like that. Considering an academic showcase night, we've done some robotics nights and some other things. Do more of a district-wide, let's show off what we're doing because a lot of people don't know the things that Mr. Delp does in his class or what Mrs. Farrell does in her math class. And then doing better with communicating with our Hispanic families, those that have limited English ability at home. And then the other girl, goal is responsive culture and focused on social emotional learning for students. Anything from showing up on time to managing your behavior to having special needs from home, difficulties at home that they carry over into school. So we have a tool that we identify those that might be at risk, that might need some help. We've not done a great job collaborating on that, so we're looking at that. Wednesday, we're going to go through some of that data. We've done a lot of work with trauma-informed, understanding that kids come to us with difficulties from home and little Johnny might need to be dealt with a little bit differently than we deal with Carl. And then we did, we did take that step already to hire a full-time counselor when Brock came over full-time from Stafford. So that gives you a snapshot of what our, our goals are. And again, a lot, there's a lot more data that we'll need to look at, achievement data, So are we in compliance with all of these areas? This is what they're going to look at when we are accredited. Licenseure, professional development plan, special education, dyslexia, child nutrition and wellness, our food service program. All of those things go into that. Are we in compliance with all of that stuff? And then these various areas, but things that. And then these various areas, but things that, these rose capacities here, communication and basic skills, arts and cultural appreciation, relate to the Supreme Court's decision about what are we required to do as a state to fund education, and that's what those areas, that's why those areas are there, and how are we doing with helping kids, you know, the MTSS and tiered supports for those that are struggling, diversity to that grade, are we meeting the needs of everybody, is everybody included? And then looking at our goals that we just talked about, those two goals, and maybe some more, just more policies and procedures and human resources, that's obvious, and then board goal areas, this is from the State Department, the State Board, so, making sure every kid is ready for kindergarten, social-emotional, what are we doing to address those needs, making sure every kid has an individual form of study, we need to be growing our graduation rate or keep it above ninety percent, and then that post-secondary education success. So those are all the data pieces they're going to look at, and then connecting with stakeholders, so, you see there's a lot to this, other than just those two goals. So, that's where we're at on that, we're really just, it felt like we've been away from that for a while, and really now getting, getting our feedback address, that we can focus on improving our school, rather than just making sure the doors are open, so. We'll be talking more about that as we move along. Graduation requirements is part of this, there's a state task force looking at graduation requirements from state, there's twenty-one specific courses that are required for graduation in the state, they're looking at maybe changing those, but what makes sense, we have twenty-five required, an example is consumer and personal finance, that's not a requirement of the state, it's recommended, but we have that as a graduation requirement. So one thing we're looking at, we also require a full credit of computer applications, so does it make sense that-
Half, half credit.
Oh, half credit.
Change that to a half.
Okay. Does that make sense that we still require that? When kids become freshmen, they're pretty proficient in that already, or does that just need to be embedded in our curriculum, they use it all the time anyway, or does it need to be a standalone class? I'm not arguing one way or the other, just as we go through this process, maybe looking at that, is a full credit required for that consumer and personal finance, or could that be a half a credit? So, I know we have kids that end up their senior year that have to take, like, that consumer and personal finance, but then they want to take a college class, or they're stuck in that class that we said they need to take, which is a positive, I mean, that's all just part of the process, but we'll be looking at our graduation requirements again. And then, this diploma plus, I'm not sure if we want to head in that direction, but just to give you an idea, this really comes from the Kaufman Foundation, and have you ever been asked for your diploma when you've applied for a job? My diploma means nothing, when I go apply for a job, nobody, nobody needs it, they just need to know I have it, but, does that do a kid any good? Yes, it does, but what else does a kid good? If they leave us with quality work experiences, that's going to make them more employable, and get some of those, develop some of those qualities that they don't just get in the science classroom, for instance. Industry-recognized credential, can they leave us with a welding certificate, or a certified nurse's aide, or nine hours of college credit, that's going to make them, research tells us that they're going to be more likely to finish their degree, or start their degree, and finish their degree if they leave us with college credits, or any other entrepreneurial experiences. So, a diploma plus would be, if you have any of these, if you have a credential, then you get a diploma plus, so it's an additional recognition, is that something we want to, want to consider? So, nothing to decide there, I just want to throw that out, that's something we're looking at, something we're considering. Our daycare, I've got paperwork in at the fire marshal, they were six weeks out from coming to visit, so that's probably been two weeks that I got that information, so, we're probably still a month out, just in a holding pattern that, until they come tell us, is the building feasible or is it not? If it is, what do we need to do, or if it's not feasible as it is, what do we need to do to make it feasible, and how much is that going to cost to do that? Then what we need to go about, raising money to pay for that, and then find a provider, so, putting out an RFP for providers that want to cooperate daycare in our facility. We do have a county committee that is meeting regularly, looking at daycare in the county, there's a clear need in all, all communities in our county, and this committee will also serve as a, as a fundraising group, that the school daycare needs playground equipment, if you want to donate, donate to this committee, we need a daycare in Maxville, somebody's interested in doing that, they can raise funds for that daycare. So, there's an active interest in that in the county, which hopefully will make things better in our county. The KSB convention, attended that this weekend, attended some, had some information on federal legislation, update with infrastructure, there's not a lot for schools, update on critical race theory, if you've heard anything about that, there's a lot of misinformation about that, if you have anybody ask why we're teaching critical race theory, I guess the first question is, what is critical race theory? And the answer is no, we're not, but, so there were some discussions about that. A great presentation out from a superintendent in Wisconsin about just telling our story, we could do a lot better job of letting folks know all of the great things we're doing, we try, but we're not doing good enough, because if they don't know, they're going to make it up, or they're going to believe other things they hear, so. Set in on a presentation about the bond process and facilities updates, how to go about all that, strategic planning was a very interesting presentation, something I think we really need to be, be rolling ahead on, and information just about being an effective board, so good training for, for board clerks, for superintendents, for board members. Alisa, did you have anything to add there?
No, I mean, I put in input about a, I feel like our superintendent talking or listening to others, like, communicates well with our board, I feel like he kind of, I mean, he keeps you guys in the know every week with his Friday notes, some superintendents don't do that, so, and then I feel like if you guys do have a problem or an issue, you communicate with him before the meeting, some, some boards don't do that, so, I feel like we have a really good board.
It was interesting to have some of those sit-down conversations with-
Just still listening.
-a board member from Stafford, and a board member from Kansas City, Kansas, and a superintendent from Bird City, they've got like a hundred kids in their school district, but, just the different perspectives there, but we all have the same job to do, so. We'll hit you up about it next year when it's in Wichita, it might be a little easier to get to, maybe just a day session or something, but, very productive. Board of Education election, all three incumbents won, we're not beat by writing candidates, that's, I saw that was canvassed today. Bus purchase, I did have a chance to meet our bus vendor up there at the conference, got to see, see our, what our bus looks like.
Did it just drive it home?
No, this one, this one's a little bigger, had a little more bells and whistles than what we were, but, supply chain problems are everywhere, May and June, end of May, beginning of June is when that bus will be here, so, he said there's a lot that he's not been able to tell them it'll be ready for school next year, so, pretty certain parts will be, so. But that's all I had for my report, yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay, executive session, we've got superintendent evaluation, and we'll just have a meeting adjourned.
At least fifteen minutes for all that.
For what you're up.
For, for everything, we can start with fifteen, I'll go, I'll go through my stuff, and then you do my evaluation.
Yeah. Executive, can we?
Mr. President, I'm going to the board going to executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired and the performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA, with Mr. Meyer to be included, and that-
And Mr. White.
Okay, and Mr. White to be included, and we return to open session at six fifty-seven in this room.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and that the board going to executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired and the performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA, with Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included, and we return to open session at six fifty-seven in this room, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Motion, Karen.
Got a little bit of sleep, we'll let it stay a second.
Call the meeting back to order, resignations and contracts.
I have a resignation from Matty Cole as junior high cheer coach, recommend approving that resignation.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second, and that three have heard the resignation of Matty Cole as junior high cheer coach, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion, Karen.
I recommend approving Diana Bunker as junior high cheer coach, for the remainder of the season.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second, and to hire Diana Bunker as junior high cheer coach for the rest of the season, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion, Karen.
I recommend hiring Joel Delp as a third, or a second assistant coach for junior high boys' basketball.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second, and to hire Joel Delp as a second junior high boys' basketball coach, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion, Karen.
Agenda items coming up, our audit report, haven't heard officially, but I think, Alisa, have you heard, are they coming next month?
Yeah.
Okay.
I need to get his number from him.
Okay.
He tried to call me, and I missed it and lost the number.
And strategic planning, I'll try to get ahold of KSB and have him get a presentation on that, so we can get that going, if that's what we want to do, we will have our S R plans that will need to be approved at some point, and then my contract.
Okay, thank you. Motion, adjourned.
I so moved, Mr. President. Second.
It's been moved in second, and that adjourned, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion, Karen. Thanks, everyone.